All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is six thirty two and we are meeting this evening at the Lakeville Public Library at Four Precinct Street. We do have a quorum this evening with Mr. Welga, Mr. Lodge, myself, and then our associate member Donna is with us as well. I believe Jack will be joining us momentarily, but our first, oh, we have Lake Cam recording. For the record, is anyone else recording? Hearing none. The first item on our agenda is executive session. Possible executive session pursuant to open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A seven. Review, approval, and possible release of executive session minutes pursuant to general law thirty A, section twenty two F, March twenty four, twenty twenty five, and March twenty seven, twenty five. And to return to open session. So would someone like to make a motion to enter executive session?
I make a motion that we enter executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We will take a momentary um absence and we'll return. Would someone like to make a motion to return to open session?
I make a motion that we return to open session.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda item number two, vote to release executive session minutes. Would someone like to make that motion?
Um, I make a motion to release the executive session minutes.
Second.
For March twenty fourth and March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
With a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The minutes will be released. Uh, agenda item number three, meet with Serpent regarding rules and regulations update. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out on this dark and cold night.
It was very dark. I was just sitting there on the drive. I was like, it's always a little scary once I get off the highway.
The Bridgewater Triangle.
Such good work.
Such good work. Um, well, thank you folks for the record. My name is Taylor Perez. I'm joined by my colleague, Robert Brawl and Sean Hilton from Comprehensive and Transportation Planning, uh, respectively. We just wanted to give you folks an update on what's going on with the uh, the rules and regulations review. And then we have some questions, which is mostly why Rob and Sean are here to kind of speak to some of the, you know, design principles behind our questions and the transportation um standards. So, you know, they can answer any questions, but we'll just kind of walk through them. The updates to begin with is that we are going to work with your legal counsel to do a review. Um, we worked with the town admin to get that going. Um, we're finalizing a fee schedule for the board's review, uh, comparing, you know, mostly neighboring communities and the communities throughout the Serpent region, but there are some external ones. We didn't see anything like crazy. Um, the only form that was, I guess, leaning higher than others was for A and Rs.
Oh, wow.
But otherwise, it wasn't like there was anything crazy standing out.
Okay.
Next things on our agenda to kind of start reviewing and incorporating is the timeframes for review and getting those stormwater, um, that stormwater language incorporated. I've been coordinating with Sarah and our environmental department who I got produced the bylaw for you folks, so.
Great.
Kathy forwarded me some questions. We're coordinating to make sure that they get incorporated correctly.
All right.
Um, so starting with questions, um, unless anyone has questions about the meeting.
Anyone have questions?
No.
Nope.
So, I asked Kathy this and I just wanted to clarify with you folks so I understand. I know that there are not many uses that you are a special permit granting authority for, but there are some, correct?
Correct.
Do you folks have existing rules and regulations for the approval of special permits?
Uh, standalone rules and regulations?
Right.
I, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I, I didn't see any either. Um, I was, so as a special permit granting authority, typically there would be some sort of rules and regulations associated with the approval of special permits. Um, I, I don't know if they're kind of like baked into the zoning boards, um, rules and regulations, but we just wanted to check on our end because there are communities who kind of bake that into their, you know, the rules and regs in their totality.
Right. That would be, that's something, and actually, you bring up an interesting question. So, planning board is the PPA authority, uh, plan approval for the forty R district. And although we haven't had a meeting, we're s- we are still supposed to meet and go, and I believe there are rules and regs for that.
Okay.
Which I, I think I've seen, like maybe looked at once. Um, cause it's.
Right. Built out.
Yeah, it's all built out, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Um, so I don't know if it's worth mentioning or incorporating any of that or taking a look at that.
Sure. I think I can take a look at it. Um.
Perhaps.
Yeah, cause I was, I know Kathy directed me to some language in the existing zoning bylaws, particularly for, I think it was the floodplain, um, permitting processes, but I know that the bylaws for other um uses that are specified have language. Something along the lines of the planning board will adopt rules and regs for the, you know, approval of these special permits. So, if it's something that doesn't exist elsewhere, we can definitely talk about incorporation of something like that.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'll do a little extra digging, um, probably just jump on a call with Kathy at some point to confirm.
Yeah.
And then we can look into what that would take.
All right. Sounds good.
Cool. So, starting with some questions, as we were kind of working through, um, particularly the design standards and, you know, focusing on the things that came up in all of the different waivers that you folks typically give out. Um, the first one I have here is about public versus private roads. And so, when I was talking with Rob, we were, and Sean as well. We were trying to understand exactly what is make or break for the town to accept a road versus, you know, it remaining private in perpetuity. So, for example, are there s- you know, certain road specifications that DPW would need or the fire department would need for, you know, plowing, utility maintenance, safety, et cetera? And what are those?
Yeah. So, I thi- I think when I had spoken with Frank, the DPW director about it, um, he had mentioned how we should have the peer review at every step of the way so that we're ensuring that the roads are being built, you know, as, as they should be. Um, which would obviously be a little more costly than if it's a private road and maybe not having as many.
Points of review.
Points of review, exactly. Um, and obviously the record tracking for that so that he'd be able to look at it and, and ensure that everything was done properly.
Okay.
So I think it was more of just making sure that it's done per the specs.
Okay.
Um, at that time, so that it's not, oh, now we have a road. We have no um record of anything and they're trying to go to town meeting for acceptance.
Right, and no one's inspected or whatever to date is kind of the issue.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so, do you have any questions about that? Does that make sense?
Okay.
So, yeah, so we can, um.
Well, I guess the one, would, would you want something in the way of a sort of checklist of requirements where you think it would be more ad hoc because of things like topography or?
Right.
Right. Like how much can you bake into?
Yeah.
I would love to see a checklist and maybe I'll, you know, have a DPW director look at it and see if that works for him.
Yeah.
That would be great. Yeah.
And loop him in, in that portion of it.
Right, cause I think it would be, you know, when we were discussing, again, the idea is like, you know, giving them as much as possible as opposed to even potentially limit the necessary inspections along the way or the review along the way so that, you know, it's understood from Sean that the bare minimum.
Exactly.
You need to do X, Y, and Z.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Cool. Yeah, so if, if we could coordinate with DPW somehow to, again, like fully understand exactly what make or break items are. That way, those are very clearly specified and then we can incorporate a review process, um, some language about that.
Cause the goal here, right, is just to not have re- the town receiving a road that's onerous to maintain more than is necessary, right? I mean, that would be basic.
Right.
Right. I mean, the town is very, it's, it's.
We have a lot of.
Very adamant against adopting more roads, so like they just wanna make sure that everything's been done and is in place and all the drainage.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Crystal clear what's going on.
Everything that was supposed to be is, has been done and, you know.
Lots of private roads and.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it, as you can see with the waivers requested, there's so many
So forth.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that are typically requested for the private roads and, oh, well, it's gonna be re- remain in perpetuity private. So that's why we're thinking allowing lesser standards for the private versus anything going for acceptance.
Right.
It's understandable and it seems to me that certainly the scale of what's around the road, a full subdivision would warrant sort of a different level of scrutiny than.
Right.
Splitting one lot into two or something like that. I'd share with ostensibly a driveway or something. I can, I can understand that, yeah.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Great. Okay. I don't think I have any additional questions about that beyond, again, just like coordinating with DPW and, and, um, you know, understanding some of those kind of bare minimum requirements. And then getting into sidewalks, we discussed, we had a conversation about that. And I know when we last talked, we were talking about requiring sidewalks for all subdivisions and having the applicant essentially approve hardship otherwise. So, you know, no exemptions without, um, you know, get substantial proof.
Okay.
We talked about this, I guess, in the context of like the purpose of the sidewalk and the connectivity. Um, and there were some other options that we wanted to put before you folks. For example, requiring sidewalks only for subdivisions of a certain size, whether that's based on the number of lots or units within it. Um, or requiring sidewalks for subdivisions that connect either one to a numbered roadway or two to a road with like an existing sidewalk. So you're actually like connecting to a grid and not just like installing a sidewalk that goes nowhere.
And that's kind of been the excuse. Well, there's no existing sidewalk. However, our master plan talks about walkability, creating that connectivity.
No sidewalks.
Right.
And even though like Sub Route seventy nine has been pushed out and pushed out, but we're supposed to get sidewalks over there and I know, um,
Yeah, yeah.
I know it, it is a desire to have more sidewalks throughout town, so.
Right.
I don't really want to be able to use that excuse of, well, there's no existing sidewalk.
I see.
Then why should we provide a sidewalk when we also, um, don't know what the future holds for certain roads in town? Well, maybe they will be expanded. Maybe they will be added the sidewalks eventually.
Right.
So now all the subdivisions don't have sidewalks and if they add them in the future.
Right.
Uh, because, so Master Plan Implementation Committee, when we had met with them, um, one member, she had said, you know, she was very surprised that we were allowing to waiver both sidewalks rather than just one.
Right.
So I could see, you know, that being an allowance for a accepted road, it has to have the sidewalks on both sides. But if it's gonna be private, then maybe allow, like you said, show, show hardship for why you can't provide the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Right, is that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you can expect that, that many of these roads are gonna be expanded over the years, like Rhode Island, for instance.
Right.
Yep.
It's, it's gonna have sidewalks put in.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got subdivisions down there that I don't think have sidewalks.
Yep.
Yeah.
That, you know, that connect to Rhode Island.
And even, so even in the area of the schools, like I know there's children that walk to schools and there's no sidewalks over there. And now we just, you know, we've been putting in subdivisions over there, so eventually I'm sure people are gonna wanna see sidewalks over there.
Right.
And now we have subdivisions without sidewalks and, and they're right.
Yeah.
You know, close to the schools too.
Right.
Cool.
Okay, yeah, so I have accepted road, like to be accepted, it has to have sidewalks on both sides, but if it's gonna be private in perpetuity, you could, you would allow a waiver of up to one of the two sidewalks, you know, on one side of the street.
Correct.
Um, but nothing more. Um, okay, cool.
Would we wanna say no, never any, I mean.
Yeah, would you, I guess, would you be willing to waive the requirement for?
I could understand some hypothetical where the, again, like the grading or some site constraint is so tight and the subdivision is so minor that it may not be relevant, um, to have the walkability there. Again, like these situations I, I, I think come up in communities like Lakeville where the, the road is really kind of a driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Would, would it be de facto sort of disallowing, splitting of lots if they're required to put in infrastructure? But then I understand your ambition to make sure that developers are to, yeah.
So that's where I think, um, to prove the hardship or, or some, there should be a caveat that where.
Yeah.
Right.
It doesn't make sense to require that because.
Yeah.
Yeah, the practical nonsense.
That, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess the question here too is like, when you are requesting the waiver, will the allowance of, again, the potential waiver for both sides, is that something that you folks are comfortable with? Again, with proof of hardship or, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think s- yeah, I think we definitely would wanna allow that.
Like you, you, uh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah.
Cool. Um, another thing that came up that I don't know it was specifically discussed, but we were looking at, we spent a lot of time looking at the site plan, um, associated with the example subdivision that Kathy sent. And, um, we talked about the curb E I and noting the minimum for thirty feet. And we're just curious if you folks were interested in either lowering that requirement or maybe setting requirements based on the use case, the, the type of road, et cetera.
Yeah, and, and visibility or whatnot. Cause I, I feel like it doesn't matter as much if you have a, if you still have a good sightline.
Yeah.
Right.
Then, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely more of a per project sort of. That's what I would, I would.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I kind of, how many houses does the private road, road serve?
Right.
Too. I mean, it serves only two, let's for instance.
Right.
What's it cost, yeah, associated with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's just sort of the, the angle of the road coming to the road that's existing, so.
Be a case by case basis.
Yeah. The thirty minimum, I would defer to Sean a little bit on this, if, if you have anything to add, but it's sort of, uh,
Yeah.
Not, not a radius number to me, uh, for a curb cut. But it is a little vehicular centric. The wider the curb cut, the faster car can kind of come in and out of there. Tighter curb cuts are associated generally with more, if you think of like crossing the street, you can hit more, but something closer to a ninety degree angle on your crosswalk or whatever. It's a little more pedestrian centric. It kind of holds that corner. Um. But I'd say that's the trade off is, and, and also of course like loading and unloading for large trucks and whatever, the bigger the vehicle, the.
Right. Right, like the radius on a different.
The larger the number, yeah.
Garbage trucks and.
Yeah, I mean.
Sure, and actually, so the thing is, we don't have town pickup, so residents are typically responsible for their own trash.
Fire truck.
So we do have.
Okay.
Um, you know, dumpster, a lot of dumpster rentals. Not everybody has, um, the weekly pickup.
Very large, yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that is something to consider, I guess.
Right.
Right.
So I guess we would defer to whatever you recommend.
Sure. I, I don't know how you, I think the, the not having consideration for a limitless high end of a radius could introduce. Maybe, maybe just having some guideline there talking about.
Right.
Just that something to help make that decision because.
Yeah.
Not having it on the high end, you could have some scenario where someone recommends a ridiculously large.
Yeah.
Radius on a curb cut that just maybe doesn't meet the goals of that site. That was more, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, that's where we were getting into different use cases, perhaps like a neighborhood street hasn't been zoned potential.
Do you wanna?
Uh, for instance, a ten foot, uh, would probably be better suited in a neighborhood setting whereas a thirty foot might be good for a commercial driveway or perhaps even larger. So we could, we could break it into different use cases if that would be more useful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause like to David's point, you know, it depends on how many homes you have.
Right.
Yeah, it, it, it's one of those things where it really kind of depends on the specific circumstance. And that gets to be very difficult to try to codify.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you're, you're. I mean, I hate to make language in, in regulations that somewhat ambiguous.
Right.
But, uh, sometimes maybe that's the best approach that you.
That was a, a good basis.
Yeah, that you let them know that, that we're looking at it and considering it and, uh.
This is the range you would expect to see or something, but yeah, on a case by case, we could review it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I know the, the site plan that we looked at was, um, I think the, the waiver was like, what, it was ten or something? And then there was a much steeper one on the other side, but we, we talked so much about like, you were saying like the sight line, like, oh, like, you know, you actually make the turn in, it's not gonna be as extreme. So not removing the possibility for that to be considered, but maybe better codifying the range of options and expectations. Particularly, I think, um, in the, you know, with the goals of like having sidewalk networks and whatnot. Like if you're expecting sidewalks to connect to numbered roads or roads with, you know, existing sidewalks and then eventually looking at like crossings and whatnot, again, like not having that, you know, curving into the, the crosswalk itself can matter.
Yeah, I mean, you, you just used a word that would be, uh, I mean, almost central of this, it was expectations.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, our expectations are to achieve a certain, kind of a certain goal or a certain
Right.
uh, set of standards without establishing the specific standards because you can't.
Right, right. Cool. Great, okay. We have some nice, um, visuals too that I think we could potentially incorporate in there. Um, so.
That would be good.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Rob, do you wanna swap back so you can record? Cause I'm talking about plantings.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, but, so, um, Rob is a landscape architect by trade, um, so of course I was like, please talk to me about plantings. Um, I know last time we talked, we were talking about, um, one, the streets were just like as a common waiver. And also, um, just the types of plantings you folks were looking for. I did try and find the existing list of native plantings that, it sounds like the Open Space.
They had one.
Yeah.
I couldn't.
You're trying to find it.
Yeah. If you can point it, you know, send it my way or something, um, but we can also, I mean, it's up to you folks if you want to have a list or if you have thoughts on the ways to.
There are other, other many lists, you know, statewide or whatever.
I should, I should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those was what last year we had.
I'm gonna just text Liz, cause I know Mike Schroeder had had the list, but she's no longer with us.
Okay.
Right.
Um, Liz, I don't think she's on Open Space anymore either, but she might have it, that at least I can, if she can forward it to me, I can forward it to you guys.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, cause they're, I mean, these two women are just, they, they know their speci- they know they're natives.
Yeah.
Um.
And we have so many different types of scenarios for native plantings. I mean, whether it be for, uh, you know, property lines, um, you know, the coverings, that kind of thing. Or, uh, for streets, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I know one of the issues, so we like the street trees for that, sort of the, um, the aesthetic and, and the screening.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But then when they're planted along the road, it can cause issues with the roads, so that's commonly why we allow them to waiver the street trees. I think with this one example that you saw, we allowed them, you, actually, I'm not sure if you saw, but we allowed them to just place two trees per lot.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so if there's something else that we could use for, you know, the aesthetic for the screening that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
If you've seen something else that another town does that works.
Yeah, and, and something, you know, some of the other commercial, uh, properties that we've recently approved and so forth. I mean, we've had to figure out different ways of, you know, whether they have bought a, a, you know, residential area or whatnot, you know. What is the most nice aesthetic? What grows fast, but is deer resistant? You know, there's so many different, you know, variables, but to make it look good too. So it's a nice, happy medium between the residents and the, and the, uh, business owner.
Yeah, if I might ask too, so I, I heard a couple of potential applications. One is sort of a row of trees lining a street
Mm-hmm.
that you're driving along, and then the other is screening in a budding property.
Yeah.
So it'd be helpful to have just some kind of recommendations for these various situations.
Yeah, yeah, and.
Right, yeah, in lieu of, maybe something that says like in lieu of street trees, um, you know, or maybe,
Yeah.
cause I don't know if we wanna get rid of it altogether or if it's something that we wanna have, you know.
As a supplement.
As like options, maybe? These are accepted, um, alternatives.
Species, that can be used.
Yeah, the species, definitely because we've seen, you know, the deer can just do it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, arborvitae's, I forget, the, the one, the great whatever arborvitae that we've been referring to cause it not only grows fast, but it gets, you know, fairly heavy cover, but it also deer resistant.
Yeah.
It is virtually maintenance free.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Trees around this, along the sidewalks, usually like over Pine Hill or in Laverne, a forty feet apart goes in there to help screen out some of the sun because there's no other trees.
Sound, yeah, that kind of thing.
That's the purpose of, whether we want them there to screen out the sound, screen out the sun.
Sure, yeah.
And the arborvitae, we have our arborvitae too, but they're there for privacy, but they put them along the, on the decks to provide some privacy.
Yeah.
Totally, yeah. Uh, I apologize if I'm not familiar with, with this, uh, uh, part of your bylaw or anything, but do you have any recommendations or requirements for fencing in situations or is this something you'd be interested in?
Not in subdivision.
Okay. I didn't know if it was like a button. I guess if, if someone was coming to a subdivision, then they would probably be responsible.
So. Yeah, when it's, you know, like a business against residential district, um.
Yeah.
Something like that requires this, you know, the additional buffer and screening.
Right.
You drive around, you see a lot of that plastic fencing there.
Mm-hmm.
I saw this one, yeah, yeah.
It is everywhere. And it blocks out, you know, we had it put over in Laverne because it blocks out the noise. We have a surge treatment system that blocks that, the odor that make up of the.
Kind of noisy, yeah.
Right.
Believe it or not, yeah.
Yeah, so our existing bylaws do allow for fencing.
In, in lieu of.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just have notes here, um, a list of those plantings coming through and then, um, addressing one, screening preferences for plantings, um, and then providing some alternatives, you know, in lieu of street trees, which I guess you and I can game out what some of those alternatives could be.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Any other thoughts on plantings?
No, no, we'll probably, you know, show some images and make some various recommendations and can sort of pick the ones you like and.
Right. Yeah, some.
That'd be great.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll show rationale for why we chose each one.
Right.
Perfect.
I mean, it, it, ju- just from, from experience, and I don't know if it's something we, we wanna think about or put in there is, is, uh, you know, regarding tree replacement.
Yeah.
To, um.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of, of one example here, uh, along the, uh, Crooked Lane where the solar farm is.
Right. That's a big deal in town. These trees died and they were never replaced and they're still there.
Yeah.
They were.
And it's an eyesore and it's.
Okay.
And they're dead and it's a fire hazard, so, yeah, something like that.
They were spruces, like Christmas trees and, yeah.
That would be good. Yeah.
There was forty five or fifty of them and, and majority have died. Some matured, some did not.
Just don't die.
But those were screening of a solar farm, so it's not.
Of a solar farm.
Right. So it's like ten trees in the solar farm.
Yeah.
I drove by on the way here, I, yeah, I noticed, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
May, may I ask how long they, they lived or if you have like a requirement, like, cause you know, trees usually come with a warranty? And I didn't know if there's a, and a lot of times in the landscape architect side of things, you'll have to have a year or two of, uh.
Right, written into the conditions and we, it's definitely something that was picked up on after this occurrence.
And we.
After, yeah.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I, I don't believe there was anything in, it was but prior to myself on this, on planning board, so it's going back a little ways.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, you know, part, part of my question is how long can you run that out for, you know, can you?
That's what I kind of think. Sure, like what they were.
You know, do it for perpetuity or, you know. I mean, I, and, 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 you know, on the, on the personal experience side of things, I remember cities in the Midwest where Dutch elm disease took out all.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I remember getting cut out of my grandmother's boulevard area and they put a Linden in to, to replace it. And that was so long ago that that tree's very big now too.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but at least that was city property and we're dealing with, you know, private property locations. But if a tree's required in the regulations, there ought to be some semblance of a way of enforcing its perpetuity.
Certainly. I mean, um, to speak abstractly, I suppose, um, there's like establishment period where like any planting, I think, needs more irrigation than it's going to need for the rest of its life cycle and its roots are more robust.
Yeah.
So at that point.
The Crooked Lane example was very, very dry summer when that was, I think it was twenty sixteen, somewhere around there, twenty fifteen
Yeah. Yeah.
when those were planted and they just, they did irrigate them, but it, they just, the conditions weren't favorable, so.
That, that makes sense, yeah. So, I mean, then there's sort of the liability between the owner and the person they purchased the trees from, you know, during that establishment period. But it would put the, the onus on, on them and not the town, at least at that point, I think, to have.
Sure.
Unless there's a lawn care service involved. Unless there's a lawn care service involved in this.
Or, or, I mean, but it wouldn't be, yeah, yeah.
Right, well, the good thing is.
It'd be done to figure it out if you're requiring for that establishment period, I guess, would I would say.
And typically, so we'll have an HOA agreement that the town council will review, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe that, that's something that, um, if the rules and regs can pick up on that, then we can maybe mirror it in the conditions.
Right.
Make sure that the HOA is aware that, you know, to maintain or replace any.
And beyond that. Oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, at that point, you're getting into sort of maintenance agreements, I suppose, which could, they could go on for a long time, but it it sort of, I guess, depends what you all feel is like a reasonable expectation.
Yeah, I mean, we do the same thing with stormwater and and, you know, stor- stormwater uh uh infrastructure,
Yeah. Yeah.
and landscape, I I would think you'd kind of handle it the same way.
Yep, yeah.
Right. I remember seeing a note about that, um that you folks like do look for the the ma- the maintaining of existing plantings, um. I, and forgive me, I didn't like look closely, is that stipulated right now within it, within your guys? I mean, I could check.
That I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
Can look at that, yeah.
Yeah, we can, cause if not, we can definitely put like, you know, an operation maintenance like statement in there like we do.
We put it in zoning, we write it all the time.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It would just be like a similar statement, um.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Confirming the maintenance, uh confirming the replacement.
I think we usually write five years in for maintenance, if I'm thinking, I'm trying to recall.
Mm-hmm.
And so that would be.
Mm-hmm, and that gives enough time to establish.
That's what I was gonna say, that's long, that's long enough to establish.
Plenty of time. One to two years, I think is usually.
Mm-hmm, usually healthy.
Uh and that's like if you buy from a nursery, the warranty on like even a perennial life is usually like a year, like that growing season, so.
Right.
I don't remember if it's more or less a tree, I guess, sometimes depends, but anything beyond one or two years, the plants should really start to feel established and
Right. Okay.
thriving on their own, so five would be a healthy.
I mean, that sounds good to me, I don't care about the five year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Cool.
Cool. We'll cross-reference too with others just to um ensure, but I, five feels reasonable to me.
Right.
Yeah, then 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 the other part of replacement too, I I didn't know if you were uh thinking along these lines too, is if somebody wipes out a tree in a right of way, are they required to replace it in kind at the moment, or I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that either.
I'm not sure. I don't.
That's a goal we could.
I don't believe it's in there.
No, I don't think it's in there.
No.
Is that, would that be a priority for the town to, yeah?
Cover all bases.
Yeah, it did give mine, you take the private residence, which I think condos, which become a more of a, visible.
No, this is, so this is for subdivisions, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, sure. Yeah, cause I, I mean, that is true on the extreme end, and like Cambridge and stuff, they they do have protected species, even foliage, people's private properties and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
This is like Palo Alto in California where a lot of big old oak trees and stuff, but then again, it gets into the sort of.
Oh, California is such a different beast.
Gets into especially private property rights and, you know, what your bundle of rights are as a property owner, so I, that's, on the on the like, the far end of it, you can go very, very far, probably further than I would think, but.
But it's beautiful out there.
Yeah, yeah. So it it totally depends on, I think people collectively agree is like a fair, it means the priorities of the town.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
Understanding this, you know, infinite trade-offs.
Right, and I don't wanna create something that's a hard hardship for an owner, but just something that maintains what they're required to put in, you know,
Yeah.
Right, right, this was a. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For um, for, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
For initial, for the initial subdivision, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Um s- lighting was the last one, uh we're gonna incorporate the language about the driveway lanterns.
Mm-hmm.
I was just curious if one, like, there's any sort of specific design preferences you have regarding that, even like height.
Um, so just the language, I think, so we do have the dark sky bylaw, so it, it's just the down facing, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Just reference that.
I don't think there's specific lumens, but the, you know, it does talk about light trespass and.
I don't, I don't remember the.
Right.
Sure.
Um, yeah, just the direction and not to be shining on the body properties.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
But a- again, that kind of, you end up with different circumstances in different locations and and uh kind of telegraphing our our intentions or our desires uh without being too specific.
Perspective, right.
Yep, yep.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if there was anything beyond just the kind of reference to the lighting bylaw and that that is an alternative, is to provide driveway lanterns, but we can do that, um.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any aesthetic kind of concerns you guys have, like, type of like, yeah?
Right, that's kind of what I was alluding to.
We haven't required any?
We have, in the, in the past, and, I mean, it would be nice to, but you, I don't think this is kind of a town where you
Okay. You can put up like.
Yeah.
Tell them what can be referenced.
Points of reference mixture.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I've seen the concrete pillars, and I've seen the metal, and um I think there's a, have you seen wooden ones even, driveway, I'm not sure.
Uh, no, I can't think of anything offhand like that, but I I do, you know, some are built into, you know, the stone facade, that kinda thing.
Right.
For sure.
Right.
Um granite posts, that kinda thing.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It gets.
But I haven't seen anything specifically, um.
Okay.
It gets tou- it gets tough, cause you know, if you have like a special district where it feels like a downtown, it can create an aesthetic, but townwide, I think it's, you know, it's tough.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't even, yeah, we don't even have like a specific historic district, even though I think they are working on towards trying to have this area designated by.
Comes over.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Right here. Yeah, so.
Okay, cool, so we can just keep that language pretty general, and again, just like address it as an alternative um option, but we don't have to provide any sort of like aesthetic references necessarily.
Yeah.
Um and one day in the future, if you wanted to, you can always put something like that in there.
Okay.
Um and so the last question I had for you folks regarding any of the design standards was, you know, we talked about some diagrams that we would, we think could be helpful, you know, for example, the the curb radii, um you know, the planting options potentially as alternatives to street trees,
Mm-hmm.
but we were curious if there were any other um diagrams or visual aids that you think, you know, would be helpful in the process.
Not sure, I mean, I I I think what would be helpful is what some of the area towns are doing, um.
Sure.
Shall we need that?
That that would be a good benchmark to look at, um, you know.
Yeah.
What were you gonna say, Josh?
Sorry.
Is there any that already in our design, exterior design, layout?
So, no, so, cause we only have the design standards for the commercial buildings, this is for us residential, so um we don't really have the design standards for that.
Yeah, that's why I said this.
Right.
But as far as layout, um, I mean, I keep thinking of like the OSRD that we're looking at as well.
Mm-hmm.
I know they have specific sort of layouts or examples, but I can't think of anything where we would have a standard subdivision look, aside from these specific items that you mentioned, the trees, the radii, I think, I think those are, um.
Right.
Yeah.
I think there'd be a lot of pushback by the owner, like, reset, tell them what kind of fixtures.
Yeah.
You know, keeping it like.
Because, so, one of the common allowances, I, we have um, you know, the the Cape Cod berm as opposed to the um.
Right.
Sure.
The.
The vertical curve or whatever.
Yeah. Granite, the Grant curve, um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I guess maybe just some, you know, these are allowed, maybe diagrams of what's allowed.
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
Um.
And do we have anything about the subdivision name, not so much the street name, but like, I think of like La Baron Hills, it says the cottages on the outside, I mean, of the entrance, I don't know if that's anything, not to be required, but suggested.
For signage?
For, yeah. I don't even know if that's even.
I feel like it would be redundant with our sign bylaw, but I don't know, maybe not, because that's obviously commercial versus residential, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if you think.
Yeah, I mean, uh uh, I I don't know if you wanna get into that at all, other other than if somebody does something that's kind of obviously
Yeah.
A problem.
Do.
Right, right.
Have you seen anything like that, where they have like the signs, cause I know what he's talking about, could, everyone in town that I've seen, they look nice, they're done, I think it's typically like rock or.
Yeah. They're they're nice.
Right.
Yeah, with some sort of.
Yeah, tops of five feet off the ground, tops, I think.
Yeah, yeah, like the entrance of a, you know, development.
Right. But.
I mean, sometimes like you'll, um, I don't know if you folks have a specific signage bylaw, that's like, it, cause.
We, we do have a sign bylaw, but it's for commercial, um as opposed to like a residential subdivision sign.
You do.
I don't think there's any mention of that in there.
Like La Baron for some of there, and I use them as, cause it's the most relevant community that's recently come up, I mean, there there is some, um, I I think for most of the entrances, like there's the cottages.
That's low, that's only about four feet off the ground, tops.
Yeah. There's the residences.
In residence, is that one up front is eight feet.
Well, yeah, I mean, the one coming in from from, you know, on on La Baron, is is probably still three, you know, only three feet off the ground to the bottom of it, cause it's got a stone wall in front of it. Yeah, you have the settlement. But it's pretty good size too.
Your states is all feeling low, most of the way, if you go around like the different developments, all the signs are mainly ten feet in length, you know,
They're low, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
With, and probably only maybe the tops five feet up.
Yeah.
So.
You know, I'd like to go back to this, the lighting, should we control or limit the amount of lumens, so it's not too bright for the guy next to us, how.
So I think, I think with that light trespass, that should be, cause as long as it's not shining on your neighbor's property and your neighbor's window while they're trying to see, I think that's the goal, um which it should be covered with that dark sky night compliant, I think, reference, unless you think there should be additional.
My personal, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not yet. Just um, point of clarification, because I'm seeing things in the town code that reference lighting.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, are those things that we would use to guide? It talks about lumens.
Oh, it does talk about the lumens.
Mm-hmm.
So, just for my own understanding of how things work, would those be bylaws, because in the code, it does say this bylaw.
Yeah. Correct, yes.
So that would, that could potentially guide.
So your problem with that, that the the dark sky compliant bylaws.
Anything. Right, it's, the dark sky is here, but then I also see another one, one eighty, section one eighty dash two, light trespass, it defines all things findings and purpose.
Right.
So from my understanding, as in someone who is new, is that where we would find the language to inform?
Perform. For for the subdivisions too?
We would.
Yes.
I I think they could reference our bylaws, yeah, in there, to to mirror it.
I. I would feel a lot more comfortable doing that than relying on my own knowledge of like lumens or something like that.
Yes.
Um, I I find it to be, even as someone who's dealt a lot of lighting plans, very technical and hard, we don't understand the.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the spread of the light, you know, how it filters out around his periphery versus the height of thing, it it gets very um technical in a way that I.
Right, and we just ask for the pla- like for the site site plan, we look at the plan that they show us and make sure there's nothing outside of it and.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, beyond that, I wouldn't even know that much, you know.
Yeah, and and, you know, lumens is the is the measure of of how much light is emitted by a by a fixture, but not necessarily how much gets outside. Um, you know, you can, I mean, as an example, you could put a high lumen fixture uh in a enclosure that's got tinted glass on it,
Yeah.
and it's not admit admitting as much. Tinted glass, everything.
Right.
You know, you're almost better doing foot candle measurements, but I'm not gonna argue with, you know.
Well, I think as long as we have something that references existing bylaws, just stays in line with that, it should be, I I assume it should be good,
Right, just to be clear.
Yeah.
as long as they're, you know, staying in line with what is exists.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And I don't know how specific those are, because you just mentioned something that might be a little bit more specific, right?
Right.
Yes, these are more general maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
We could certainly take a look at it and and we'll we'll see to what extent we can kind of interpret what it's trying to get at with this discussion of lumens or just general discussion of dark sky.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we understand, or to confirm, we understand the intent to be to not shine light, not on the property,
Yeah, I mean, that's true.
and disrupt uh the dark sky or disrupt the neighbor's enjoyment of their private property or.
Yeah.
Correct, while still providing a bit of light for emergency services and, and, you know, being able to see where you're going.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Right. Gotcha. Okay. So the only other last notes I had was, I mean, I'm I'm just more summarizing here, was looking at the signage bylaw, because again, it refer, it's for commercial, but um I didn't see anything beyond street signs in the regs, so again, maybe some language around that for residential subdivisions.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So to summarize everything just for tonight, um con- t- speaking with the DPW director about that kind of peer review process for roads intended to be accepted, and establishing some kind of like bare minimum requirements to understand from jump, if you intend to have the, you know, town accept this road, you need to have X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Um, the requirement for sidewalks in all subdivisions with the applicant needing to prove hardship to remove sidewalks, um a diagram for the curb radii discussing, you know, kind of potential use cases and and expectations.
Mm-hmm.
Some language about plantings, particularly alternatives to street trees, uh screening preferences, the, you know, requirements for replacing uh the, you know, lost trees, um as well as maintenance, ensuring that that is, you know, adequately addressed. Referencing the lighting bylaw and again, providing an alternative for driveway lanterns, again, as long as they're dark sky compliant, et cetera. And then, um, you know, any sort of additional visual aids we can provide that, um, again, visually describe what's allowed within the regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the example I had was the um the berms and whatnot, and then again, that signage point that I was just making.
Mm-hmm.
You have a street s- street signage, they're controlled by the fire department, get those green signs, it's like.
No.
No, deep in the area.
Yeah.
It's so, um, I believe it's also state that does uh some road signs, but then TP, TPW does other signs.
Yeah, it says in, that they're the ones setting the standards for the road signage, so. I think that's all I have beyond, um, you know, anything else that you folks can think of between now and when we meet next. I obviously have kind of our uh next steps beyond what we've already discussed, again, those review timeframes,
Mm-hmm.
uh providing you the kind of example of the fees across different communities, um checking in about the special permit granting authority rules and regs,
Mm-hmm.
um taking a look at, you know, the forty R, for example, and then uh confirming with Kathy that those, you know, truly don't exist and that they're not referenced in like the zoning boards regs, um or elsewhere.
Yeah.
And then again, I'll let you folks know if I have any additional questions on the stormwater bylaw, um.
Okay.
I decided Sarah should be, you know, she's always very helpful, so I'm sure that she'll kind of, you know, get things in line, but I I've seen it in other regs where it's referenced pretty clearly, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and there were two sections that council basically said these shouldn't be in the stormwater, this should be in the rules and regs, so.
Right. Okay, right. That's all I have. Um, I anticipate that, you know, with the holidays coming up, we'll probably meet again in the new year.
Okay.
Um, perhaps, you know, late January or so, uh if that works for folks, I can obviously coordinate at that time, probably in December, to get on the agenda, um, but you know where I am if you have questions, so. Anything else on your end that you would want clarification?
Yeah.
No, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
I appreciate you folks here.
Yeah.
Just coming out and the presentation, it's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Of course, anytime.
Yeah, so maybe January twenty second, around there, that would be our, January.
Yeah, yeah, we put an optional note on the calendar here for um an anticipated return on January twenty second.
A late meeting.
Um, I'll just make sure we don't have anything on our calendar or confirm with Kathy.
All right, sounds good.
But that should at least work for now, so.
Very good, appreciate all your help with this.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
It's a nice thing to know.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number four in our plan, twenty seven reservoir of Derek Maxey, Madigan Land Surveying LLC.
How are you? Hello, folks.
Well, Derek, we do have your application and the plan, we did add the um the existing septic and water existing in there, um. And if you, did you wanna?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking at the plan myself. No, I I'm here today to uh request the plan and board, hopefully to approve my ANR for lot one and lot two reservoir app. Uh there is an existing house there that belonged to the Beach family that I purchased it, uh because prior to me purchasing it, they actually owned the seventeenth grain, and I've been paying rent, all the taxes and everything for the last, what, ten years or whatever, so I thought it would be best to purchase that, and in hindsight, uh also hindsight, I was able to develop one extra lot far, and I think that was pretty much it.
So, so for myself, I was curious and confused, because I had never seen water included in the land area, so I did reach out to council just for that
Yeah.
um piece of it, and she said that, um, you know, as long as you have the frontage, um it doesn't need to say that it's not considered a buildable lot, because you do have the ver-. considered a buildable lot, because you do have the verdiage here that says no determination as to compliance with the zoning bylaw. Um, so that's fine, because I didn't know if it had to say anything in there additionally.
To address that, okay.
Yeah, um, and she said that it's up to, uh, zoning enforcement officer. Um, and also I was confused because I know we have the plan for the Lakeville Country Club.
Yes.
So it shows on the plan easement area, but it also sho- so it showed that this was gonna be part of the golf course. It says, I think the fifth hole.
Uh, the seventeenth green, eighteenth hole, eighteenth fairway, seventeenth green.
But so, so in the future plans shown for the proposal from Thorne Dyke.
Yes.
They have it, I think it's a fifth hole, fifth or sixth.
Uh. Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And I think they're moving forward, which is good.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fifth green is shown in the same area.
Well, yeah, the fifth green and the, and the six, six tee.
But so I guess that's going, it's not in.
We haven't, we haven't got that side with Thorne Dyke yet on what's gonna happen there.
Okay. Okay.
My understanding of what they'd like to do is a nine-hole golf course with houses in the middle.
Yeah.
And trying to keep all the other holes, but we haven't formalized that yet.
Okay.
And I think, uh, probably within the next few, probably by the end of the year, we'll have that all formalized. And hopefully they'll be in front of you guys with their plan.
Right, right.
Very good.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure that there's, you know, make sure that when you're talking about what they need for an overlay for zoning.
Right.
Doesn't contradict anything that you're trying to do over here, so.
Right, yeah.
Just, just so it's clear when we go to town meetings, we, there's no, you know, the last thing we, we need is something that jeopardizes it.
Exactly. Yeah, and, uh, these, these two lots, I don't anticipate selling to him anyways, so this will not be part of his plan when he do get the final plan.
Okay. All right then, um, did anyone else have any questions, comments? On the A and R? All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve this A and R?
I make a motion to approve the A and R plan for twenty seven reservoir app.
So good.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
Have, have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Yes, you as well.
Coming up, season's coming up quick.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, oh yeah.
There it is. All right, agenda item number five, stormwater management bylaw review and update possible vote. So we do have in our packet, um, a copy of the stormwater bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Kathy did go through it and I did make, I wanted to compare to the last one that we had reviewed. I know she'd made, um, some changes and I know, uh, Taylor just mentioned that, um, she's working with Kathy, because a couple of the things that we had said, Kathy, you know, please ask Serbit for some advice on a couple, for guidance on a couple of questions that we had. Um, I did notice on page five, section four, um, it looks like when Mr. Corvo reviewed it, he moved C from section four up to section three. So it's actually repeated, so I think it needs to be deleted in section four.
In the bottom.
Yeah, because it's, um, word for word, the same.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
Up above, um, other than that. She had addressed a couple of the other questions, and then, oh, the numbering, I did notice that. So the seven and the eight were the ones that should be removed and put into the rules and regs, but those are still in here, but the numbering was done.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it does show the seven, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah.
So, anybody else have any questions, comments on the stormwater?
No.
I think with just those couple edits to, to remove the sections as noted by council and then remove the, the redundant, um, section, I think, that's all that I saw. I think everything else we've already thoroughly gone through, um, that's all I'm seeing for edits.
Okay.
And, um, I think Kathy's passed the, this on, I had asked her to send it to conservation, make sure they, I know Nancy's aware of it, she was gonna get it on one of their agendas.
All right.
Um, I said, you know, send it off to Slide Board, GoToHealth, whoever else, um, may be interested, um, in seeing it.
Is there a timeline of when this needs to be buttoned up?
So I think as soon as we have any comments back, we can let Ian know.
Feedback. Okay.
Put a placeholder for spring town meeting, so that should be in March, so we, we have time.
Okay. So that's good.
Yeah, and I think.
We say that now.
I know, no, don't jinx me.
But then, like everything else, you know.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So, which is those minor.
So we don't need to take a vote or anything, right?
Um.
Because it's ongoing.
Do we wanna take a vote just to make those minor edits and send it around?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. So, um, I make a motion that, um, we approve with the, um, with the recommendation that, uh, the, um, legal counsel edits are, um, taken into account as well as deleting, uh, one of the extra paragraphs, uh, sections.
Section four C.
Section four C.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I'm sure Kathy will watch this. If not, I will talk to her about it anyways. Uh, agenda item number six, we have zoning bylaw discussion, in our packets, we have mixed use. So I thought this was fun, I don't know if anybody else finds this fun, but, um, so Kathy was, did some great research, um. Let me get down to it here. Gosh, so we have the town of Dartmouth, we have the town of Marshfield, we have the town of Medfield, we have Winchester, and then we have Cape Cod Commission, mixed use model bylaw and the company, company guide.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she even broke it down so far as, you know, what the population, median household income, as well as the square mile of the town, uh, for comparison. I thought these examples were really good, um, and I like different things from each one, um, so.
So which one stood out to you, um?
I don't, so, so this, this was my thought, so in the very back of the Cape Cod mixed use model bylaw and the company guide, inside here, in all these documents at the very end, is actually a model bylaw, which I thought was very handy. Um, so this model bylaw, it breaks it down, it lets you see the purpose, the definitions, and I feel as though we could use this model bylaw, take the parts that we like.
Yeah.
And incorporate them, so if we like this purpose, use it as this purpose. So for me, I liked the Dartmouth, um, purposes and how it has the allowed uses. I really liked how, um, it talks about in here, so, um, a business apartment is defined as a residential unit available for use by one family, which is located in a building being used for business purposes such as, but not limited to, retail, office, recreational, restaurant, or limited production uses. One business apartment is automatically allowed by right per lot, up to two additional apartments are allowed by right, up to three total per lot, so long as the total square footage of all apartment housing shall not exceed the total square footage of all business uses on the lot. So I feel like this sort of addresses where our mixed use says you can use it for business purposes or you can use it for, they have the fifty-five plus housing, and we've seen where there's just fifty-five house, fifty-five plus complexes with no, um, no business, no retail, anything, so this creates a, a more of a mixed use scenario where you have the business, but in order to put residential, you have to have the same square footage for the business and it gives.
For the business, right.
And it even gives some reasoning in here, the purpose of a business apartment is to encourage small businesses and to provide convenient and affordable housing for individuals connected to the business.
Yeah.
I.e. individuals who own or are employed by the business if rented to others. The business apartment could help subsidize business space to make the business more affordable for starter businesses. Business apartments can also help reduce commuter traffic if used by employers, employees of the business.
Yeah.
So I thought that was really good, um, to have right in the bylaw, because it breaks down, this is the benefit to having the apartment, a small business can now, you got your business space and now you've got some income from an apartment.
Yeah. And they said how many apartments?
So that's where, so it said up to three with no more than three, but we could also, we don't have to go word for word, we could do one is by right and then two is special permit, but have, you know, a special permit from the planning board.
Right.
You know, planning board being the special permit authority for that potentially.
I think it depends on the, really depends the size of the lot and, you know, or the, the size of the development that you're, that you're talking about. But in some ways, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's ki- kind of, kind of cool in, in, in one way of thought, because I, you know, I remember, uh, when, you know, convenience store with the gas pumps out front.
Yeah.
The people living in back, in the same building, but, you know, in, in the back.
Well, it's a lot like, uh, Fall River in Bedford.
Mm-hmm.
I think of Hartley's pies, the business is down, seriously, the business is downstairs at the storefront and the original family still lives upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But even in Middleborough, they have it.
Middleborough, they've got it?
You know, they have a platoon that's above the businesses.
Yeah. That was, that was something that was much more prevalent once upon a time and, and, you know, the, the, the good, the good locations.
Yeah.
Got bought up by places like Cumberland Farms and such and.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the only thing is, so I actually, they have gas stations as a allowed item, and I thought that, that to me was a no, because you don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna have.
We're done with gas stations.
And, um, and, and I mean, there's a special permit too, and we're not the granting authority for that.
Right. Right.
So I wouldn't wanna get into the gas station so much, and then it also has wireless communication sites, I wouldn't wanna get, get into any of that.
Yeah.
We have a separate bylaw section for that.
Yeah.
Um, so I would, I would take some of this out.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, like even so, but we can, you know, obviously we wanna include the height, uh, architectural appearances of the buildings. Um, from Dartmouth, I thought that, um, the uses, this was very, uh, interesting, that, um, they have fees, they break down the fees.
Yeah.
They break down the review process, um, the design standards, they break that all down, I liked, um, that. So I thought maybe taking pieces of Dartmouth, taking pieces of Marshfield, and then from Medfield, they had a lot of definitions, these two were lacking definitions. So then we have Medfield, it breaks down all of the definitions of these items that you're looking at. Obviously, we wouldn't have some of them, that would, anything that we wouldn't have in our bylaw, we wouldn't even define, but.
So this was the state hospital in Medfield, that, some of their, um, yeah, their redevelopment, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Their district is, yep, the state hospital district.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still, still kind of struggling with that, is that, how they, they actually do it, at, at least the arts group is.
Yes, the arts, yeah, I remember your saying, yeah.
Has been established there, there's like, because I, I went to their.
Yeah.
Their lunch.
So now, an interesting thing about this is they actually have different, um, breakdowns of the green, the cottage, the core campus, and they have different allowable items, uh, depending on which area.
Yeah.
And to me, I was thinking, if we do a mixed use, where are we looking to put it? Do we have a, a Route eighteen district, do we have a Route one oh five district? Is that something that we start with like a small section and then it could potentially expand if, you know, in the future?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that, is that something to consider, that maybe we should have multiple districts for the mil- mixed use? Because, so right now, I know our forty R does have the mo- the different breakdown within forty R, the smart growth.
Yeah.
So we could, could, could even look at that.
It's gonna, it would tie into economic development, so.
That's, so I think we definitely need feedback, we need resident input, but I would like to get a rough draft, to have something to put forth
Yeah. Yeah.
and then go from there and maybe build on, and what do people like, what do people not like.
Yeah.
We can see, the, 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 one place too where they've done some, something new was Norfolk. Uh, and to the, to the north of downtown, they put in a, uh, what looks like a condominium building, uh, condominium development, but there are a lot of businesses in there too.
It's a lot similar to what they're doing right now, Quincy and, and some of the outlying areas where they are putting businesses downstairs and then upstairs.
Yeah.
They've got apartments and, and.
But, I mean, I don't want people to get scared here.
No, but.
We're not talking high rise, we're talking, you know, still with thirty-five, thirty-five foot max, I still wanna keep within our,
Oh, no, 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 very small. Yeah.
Our current regulations, so it's not looking out of place.
Sure.
It's just literally giving businesses another option.
Option, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Some parts from Winchester, um, it just, like, they have conflicting provisions. So if there's something that conflicts with any other section, uh, within this specific di- district, that's what governs, um, administration, so who handles it, the boundaries, we definitely wanna figure out where the boundaries are. And once again, maybe we could even, um, do some imagery, diagrams.
Yeah, and tables, I think wherever we can break down information that's like.
Right, like the tables here.
And writ- written, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, wherever we can do that, for people to digest is good.
Yeah, visually, yeah.
So this will be a work in progress, essentially.
Yeah, so even, it, it shows how you're measuring the height too, so like, there's not a question of how do you measure the height of the building? You're going for the midsection, so, so it keeps it very straightforward, so there's no, all your amb- ambiguity is answered.
Yeah, because I've had arguments with building inspectors over that before.
Oh, yeah.
The Dover Building Inspector, the, though the, though the, well, the zoning ordinance says maximum height thirty-five feet from mean grade.
Right.
And, uh, but he measures it to the peak. And the building code says thirty-five feet, where it measures it to half the height of a cable roof.
Yeah, yeah.
And I could never get him to, to, to take the zoning definition and you can apply it to the building code. Or, no, sorry, the other way around, I could never get him to take the building code definition and get him to apply it to the zoning ordinance. So I'm, I'm happy to see that.
So another item I put a yes to was the connected parking lots, I feel like that's something we need more of too, instead of all these little egress.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If there's more chance for a connected parking lot, um, and maybe we have to look at lot coverage with that, I'm not sure, but maybe an allowance for, if there's an ability to create a connected parking lot.
Well, you, yeah, you know, tho- tho- those are things where you kind of look, look to the, to, to the future, what's next door. And making the site plan provide for a connection to something that may happen next door.
Right.
You know, you, you've got a.
Yeah.
I mean, kind of.
Or behind the.
The hospital property, you know, where we have the, uh, uh, the development, what is it, nineteen Main Street?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, uh, are they using the same entrance in their building, is it their own separate entrance?
No, separate, yeah.
You know, so we end up with two.
Right.
Yeah.
Entrances right there across from Bridge Street.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Where we're gonna have a traffic problem.
So once again, in the Cape Cod examples, there's some visual diagrams where it shows, now, these are just, these aren't just mixed use showing the upstairs as the apartments, it's actually showing accessory buildings behind, so that's what I would, one of the things I'd like feedback from. Do residents, are they interested in upstairs apartments? Are they interested in accessory building behind screened, anything like, like, what is the preference, I think is what I'd wanna see. One of the things I'd like to hear back from residents, um, in relation to the mixed use proposal.
Where do, where would ADUs fall in? Because we're using like accessory apartments, accessory buildings, but then we also have the ADU piece, would that fit into a mixed use?
So it depends, so if we write this mixed use bylaw to only allow X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
So when if, if it has to be an apartment above a business with business space, then that's how it would have to be. But if it says that the, um, accessory apartment can be a separate building behind, then that's where, yeah, that would be an ADU, would be an accessory dwelling unit to the business. But we'd be looking to still, I think, the purpose would be not just allow residential, we're looking to encourage business growth. So it would be similar to like the language that I read from that first one.
Okay.
No more not to exceed whatever the business square footage is.
Yeah, that was from Dartmouth, I think, yeah.
Yeah, how far, how far down Main Street does our business zone extend right now? I mean, we got.
I'd have to look at the map, I know it's.
I mean, we got the Star Market and a couple of things across the street from it, it seems to end there.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I'm not sure exactly without looking at the map.
Yeah, okay, we know, uh. Yeah, okay, we know, uh, uh, I'll look at it, but, uh, you know, you're, you're kind of, I, I, I guess, you know, my, my initial impression is that. You know, from, star back, you apply this, this zoning.
So, so that's another thing, like, I think we'd need fe- feedback, you know, cause we're not gonna rezone anybody's property if they don't wanna rezone it. So we'd need to get feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I did.
From residents, where do they wanna see this? Um, at the very minimum, cause right now our only, our existing mixed use is only at the hospital site. So you're talking business, but this is mixed use, so the mixed use.
Well, no, I, I, yeah, no, I understand, uh, but, you know, i- i- I was talking kind of where is our, our, our business? Because that's where you're going to, uh, where you're gonna most successful to be able to do mixed use.
Right, if, yeah, as long as people are, you know, in favor and think that this is a good thing.
And yes, I remember, right, you know, during, during my campaign for, for this position, that I said something to, a- about, you know, that. Business was going to kind of fill in or, or creep down to, to kind of where the star was. And there was one residential.
There's, there are a number of residential houses.
Uh, u- use there and, and I got a, a note, you can't do this in my neighborhood.
Sure.
And there was kind of, well, wait a minute now, you're just, you know, progress is marching on and, and, uh.
But, so anything like this would have to be done through a town meeting vote, two thirds, two thirds majority. So we want it to be something that, you know, I'm not gonna advocate for anything that people aren't in favor of.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, I, I agree.
For sure. But so, it, I mean, it could start at the hospital site, you know, we could just remove and replace, you know? But that's the thing is, do we have the multiple zones where we say this makes you, the mixed use A lies here? And I think from what town council had said about the smart growth, it had to be connected. So that's where we'd wanna consider, where do we want it to start, where do we want it to end? And is there a potential for expansion in the future maybe? If people, so say if people aren't in, in favor of it right away. At least you have a zone where maybe you can start something here, and if it goes well, the potential, so like you said, maybe then look at a further business.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 you know, the, the, the obvious site that, that you, you think about is the, uh, the bowling alley site.
Right, yeah.
You know, because.
So that already is its own business in the front, I think it's residential in the back.
Yeah, but that would be a, a perfect mixed use locale, I would, uh, you know, a- at least in my opinion. You know, that if you could find a developer that, that got the property and was kind of thinking in that direction.
Yeah.
That would be a.
So I mean, that's, that's a way down the road.
Yep.
We're starting, I think we'd have to come up with a draft that we are comfortable with, get some feedback from, um, residents. Donna, you look like you had that question.
Yeah, no, we do currently have mixed use.
We do.
Zones.
So, yeah, so it'd be, that's horrible, I'm not a fan of it, I think. We, we did try to remove it just last year, uh, it did fail, I think. I'm not sure the argument was made properly at town meeting, because it was said, well, you know, if we do away with it, the. Pe- uh, people were concerned that one, cause the hospital, uh, projects had just been, um, had just been submitted. So they knew that we were doing it, so they absolutely got it in under the, under the timeframe, so that that was already grandfathered in. Uh, but then two, I think they were saying they didn't wanna see more residential, but it, it's already sixty feet back of business zone there.
Okay.
But, so if we take, instead of doing just a full removal, if we have a remove and replace, maybe it'd be more, um.
Palatable.
Yeah, aren't, aren't they, aren't the apartments next to CBS, you know, the ones without the elevators?
Yep.
Isn't that a mixed use, uh?
Yep.
Zone and, you know, for, for whatever they've.
Yep.
Got for business usage in there, I don't know if that.
No, they, so that's just the fifty-five plus, so that's what I'm saying, so we, even though it's a mixed use zone, it was kind of like, under our allowed uses and mixed use. You could do any of these items, and it's like, you didn't have to combine them.
Combine them, yeah, and that, and that's, yeah, that's really kind of the key to it.
Yeah. It just says, you know, you can have, you know, multiple buildings on the same lot, that's why we have nineteen Main Street with a different, um, configuration. They can have the principal, you know, multiple principal uses, um, and then there's also the accessory uses allowed too. So I think we just need a better option.
Yeah.
And I think this is, these are some great examples that Kathy came up with.
What would you do on that?
Um, so at this point, I, I would like to see a draft, like I said, put together from portions from all of these. Using this model bylaw.
Yeah.
So just use this as sort of the template and fit in, like, the purpose that we like from one of them, the definitions from another. And, and, and make sure that it's covering each item.
Yeah.
Application, um, the use regulations, principal structures, use regulation setback, lot structures. Development intensity, uh, dimensional regulations, lot size, lot coverage. All these things that we'd wanna see in here, it's covering.
Yeah.
The frontage, ground floor active space, ground floor height, upper height. So I mean, it's, it's pretty in depth.
Pretty, yeah, yeah. That's great.
That's the Cape Cod one?
Yeah, so this is at the very end.
It's really clean.
Yeah. Um, the, the Cape Cod one, I mean, it's a thick packet, but there's not a lot of information on each page though either. It's, it, it has definitions, it's got history, it's got quotations, it's, it's, I don't think we need to go that in depth.
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of all of that from Kathy?
This was in her packet, yeah.
Oh, well, okay, I didn't, alright, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong packet then.
Yeah. Oh, really?
I'm looking at the, the one, the last one that Kathy sent.
Oh, yeah, this was for the six that was canceled.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, alright. So we'll continue.
So, yep, um, if we wanna take a vote to have Kathy start working on a draft, if she, in her, if she has some time between now?
Yeah.
Cause we don't really have, we, so we have this meeting and then we have just the one meeting in December. So she, she may have some time over the stretch.
Yeah, cause this is something we probably wanna bring to spring.
No, I don't think we'll, I think, I think in spring we'll be gathering information, that's what I would see. Cause I'd wanna do an event where we're bringing people in and talking to them and.
Yeah.
Do we still have a pot tying town planner? Are they working on?
Does she get to do it?
Yeah, just like specific projects, specific.
Assignments that.
But I think this is something that's enough, like Kathy could probably.
She can do this?
Pull these pieces together.
Kathy can do this.
Well, we'll see, we can ask her if she can, cause she's, she can, she can work on some, um, items that fall under planner.
In the interim.
For, yeah, in the interim. And.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so would we like to ma- take a vote to start a draft of this, using the example that she provided?
Um, I make a motion that we, um, start putting together the revised zoning bylaw for, um, mixed use. Um, using some of the samples that was provided.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, the next thing, use chart. This is just one of those things that I feel like we should look at, it hasn't, I don't think it's been done in a while. One more thing that I think we need resident feedback for, what do you wanna see in town? What's not included, what should be included, what, um, what are we missing? And maybe we should do the same thing and compare it to what other towns, cause obviously we saw it in here, these, the different allowed uses under mixed use. Um, maybe we can compare what other towns have for business, industrial, residential uses.
Yeah, cause ours might be different than what others may have on that list, so.
So one of the things that had come up, um, like, uh, going back a few years now, was, um, cause we have adult bookstore in here. And it's just, you know, only allowed by special permit, um, in the industrial zone. And at one point, um, I think our, like, the prior planner to, prior to our more recent one, had suggested that if you don't.
An adult.
Allow it somewhere, like, like you have to allow it somewhere kind of.
An adult entertainment district, yeah.
So, yeah.
Lakeville's premier, uh, business.
Every time, yeah, every time a new business opens, what is it? It's a strip club, it's a Taco Bell. The same two things, every time. Um, yeah, so I, I'd, I'd like to look at this and get feedback on this, maybe it's something we can work on concurrently with mixed use.
Yeah. Yeah.
And this is, I think, obviously less of a lift, if we can compare it to some towns, get some feedback, do you want this in, do you want this out? Where do you wanna see it? Residential business, industrial.
A presentation of those areas and, yeah, I think we should definitely, you know, look at that. Is there any, so we don't have anything like a use table yet, uh, part of our zoning.
This is. This is our use.
So that is our use table, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we would add mixed use, a column for mixed use, or is that lumped into business? Trying to understand how.
Well, you're actually kind of creating a fourth category.
Yeah, so, w- well, with mixed use, if we have the uses specific to mixed use in, in the bylaw, maybe we could create a column for that.
Right.
But I guess it depends on, cause these are just the underlying zones, that would be an overlay, so maybe not, okay, cause it would be an overlay.
Okay. Thanks, I'm trying out.
Uh, no problem, but, I mean, yeah, it's a good question, I, I mean, it's definitely something, something to think of and consider. I mean, if we, like, like I said, if we come up with a use chart for the mixed use, I don't see why we couldn't just add it on.
Yeah, cause you're already. Cause, cause you're already, you know, established it or, or voiced opinion on a couple of things, gas stations and such, that wouldn't go into mixed use.
Or maybe it's just, you know, for mixed use, uses C and then reference where it is, so couldn't have added them. You know, if, if, because we're talking about something that, you know, could potentially cha- you know, change in the future.
Okay.
As opposed to what we have now.
So we might have to add in senior overlay.
So that's an overlay too, so that would.
Senior overlay.
So that's gonna be its own zoning bylaw language, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't know if we do need to add each of the overlays.
But the senior.
Cause we're also, we're potentially gonna have an OSRD. Potentially, so.
Just a few things.
Gonna have to change it to landscape, not portrait.
Yeah. Well, okay, so anybody questions, comments on this? I'd say try to look through other towns, like Kathy did, gathering, uh, for the mixed use, um.
What do you want us to do?
I'd like to see, so if you wanna compare it to other towns, what they have for use charts? If there's ones that you like, for examples, we can review them, go through them, see what we like and. And then we need like an information session, whether it's a public here and whether maybe we do like a weekend here at the library and. Get, ha- try to get people to come out and share their opinion on mixed use and use table, what they wanna see. Maybe, I don't know, do we do it at the same time or is that too confusing? Do we do it separately?
I think we're sent, sent for cleaning up a number of things, uh, 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 and, and, you know, writing mixed use and such. Probably oughta do it as, as kind of one comprehensive project.
Cause you probably wanna introduce this all at the same, you know, meeting.
Then the other question becomes, you make it too complicated, does it, can you get it through town meeting?
Right, exactly, that's why we need outreach and input, so it's not just. But it also, I think hinges on if we can get a planner in here, when, and then, you know, what does it look like going forward?
Yeah.
Cause right now it's a slow winter.
Yeah.
Which we haven't had in a couple of years and it, it could pick up again, so.
If you wanna do a session on a weekend where you bring in the residents, it's, it's gonna be a well-planned out process, so, you know. What do you, you're gonna ask them, I mean, how many questions would you ask them, how many different pieces of the town would you want them to speak to? The gas stations, this and the, and should they know any, obviously those would have thought in advance to let them know what this is all about.
I think you would have to be done as a survey, you know? And maybe we'd have the paper surveys and then we'd have a QR code and have a, maybe electronic survey. Do you, you know, and, and probably group it by residential uses. Do you, how do you feel about these residential uses? How do you feel about business uses? Wh- where would you wanna see these? Do you wanna see them in, you know, and you can have, do you wanna see it in residential business, industrial, only in this one?
Right.
Or not, cause that's how it's laid out.
Yep.
But once again, maybe, um, also, see what Economic Development Committee's doing too. If there's anything that could, uh, coincide there.
Yeah.
So, will we go to this item?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, um, next item on the agenda, number seven, approve the October ninth and October twenty-third meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review these minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
I had my charges.
And actually, do we have?
Yeah, I have mine.
Yeah, um. The only thing I had was on October ninth, page one, where the second paragraph under, um, review stormwater management bylaw, I just. It says marker for spring, maybe at town meeting.
Yeah.
To be more specific.
Yeah, to be clarifying it, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, that's the only edit I had, Donna, do you? Would someone like to make a motion to approve those, would that one edit for the October ninth?
Yep, um, I make a motion to approve the, uh, meeting minutes for Thursday, October ninth, twenty twenty-five. With, uh, the change to the second paragraph for stormwater management bylaw. And all, can I do both at the same time?
Yeah.
And, um, also the Thursday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes approval as well.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, notes are approved. Uh, number eight, administrative update, possible votes, five Harding Street. Hmm, does she have anything? I'm trying to remember what the five Harding Street is.
That is.
Doing.
O'Leary, right?
What's that?
Is it?
I, I keep getting these two confused, cause they're both going forward right now, one of them.
Ten, ten, tenants across from Muckeys, I believe.
Across from, so that's, so this is the one.
This is.
It's the bond.
That, that's.
This is the one next to the pet food place? So this is the one that peer review, I did sign the peer review, um, charges. So I know that they were moving forward with that development.
Yep.
And then ten Harding, um, I believe the, the bond form was finally satisfied. So that one should be moving forward too. Um, the next one is Lakeville Country Club update, we do have in our packet, um, we have the facts.
Yep.
The FAQs.
Great.
Um, is, as well as the original map that they presented. And then the revised master plan as of November third. Now, these two items are found on the select board website, they do have a Lakeville Country Club, um. Link that you can click into.
Yeah. I saw that get posted, yeah.
Yep, so that's great, um, a couple worth, worth noting items, they did reduce. So it says that, um, in response to community feedback, all four story buildings have been eliminated from the redesign. Um, also, David, I know you're excited about, um, the, for examining the road alignment, add visual variety.
Yep.
Um, were there any other questions that were major that you thought were answered here?
I had a couple.
Sure.
Can they, do, do they have projections of current developments that they've done? And what's the percentage of town, townspeople that actually move into?
All that potential.
Cause they have a lot of developments that they've already done and are somewhat completed.
Right.
And I'm just curious about the percentage of townspeople that actually move into the developments.
Right, yeah, that's definitely something we can ask them.
Well, yeah.
I didn't see it included in the answers though, but I know they are working on getting some facts and figures, David, you can.
Well, that, yeah, that, I was gonna say, that's kind of the next item on the agenda, if we did can combine the, the two, um.
Is that a question maybe you could ask and just say, planning board had asked about?
Well, we did kind of. Well, we did kind of, okay, we had, we've had two meetings.
Right, but no, so like Donna was, was asking about, um, the demographics, as to how many, uh, existing residents have moved into the other, um, developments?
Yeah, yeah, well, w- one of the meetings dealt with the, the physical, fiscal impact of, of the development.
Yeah.
And i- i- included in that would be, you know, where the, um, you know, where, where the, the residents would be coming from.
It was, okay.
At all, because it could, because part of the fiscal impact is how many houses become available.
Right.
Because you're kind of recycling.
Right.
Uh, housing to, uh, o- o- other people.
Right, to free it up for other.
You know, because, you know, though, though it's an over fifty-five development, and there is no impact on the schools. There is because the people who move in.
Right.
Bring children with them.
If they are residents from the town currently.
Correct.
That are moving from their home in town.
And that, and, and that's part of that fiscal impact is.
Interesting, so that'll be interesting to see.
I would be interested in that data.
Right, right, so, so, you know, we had some discussion about that, and that does, you know, follow with how many people move from. From somewhere else in town into this, and their house becomes available, and now all of a sudden you've got three kids that moved into that house. Because they were, you know, the people who moved out were seniors whose kids had grown or anything, and all, so, you know, so.
Right.
The, the, the idea that, that, uh, a fifty-five development doesn't create any impact on the schools is, is not entirely true. Um, because of that. Uh, you know, so, so going on from there, we, you know, we had a, a meeting, they, they've hired a consultant, uh, from New Hampshire. His name has escaped me, I have it in my notes somewhere, but, uh. He's gonna go through kind of all those bits and pieces, along with, uh, taking into account that we have other. Uh, major developments, the hospital site and such, that will be adding population.
Right.
And, and, you know, how does that impact the, the, the town fiscally?
Right.
You know, do we, uh, you know, how many more, uh, ambulance runs?
Right.
Do we end up with, how many more police runs? Uh, uh, other, you know, just even other governmental services, you know, how, how much, uh, does the. As a, for instance, the, the assessor, uh, does, do they have to hire more people, because now they have more properties that they're. That they're trying to, uh.
Assess.
Assess, yes.
Yeah, well, good questions to have answered and ready, ready for people to ask, because they know those questions are gonna be asked.
Right, so, so that first meeting, uh, with that consultant, was, was just kind of going through all the bits and pieces that we wanted to see. And, and, and as you, as you said, you know, how many, how many people move from Lakeville into this? And, uh, uh, because there are other impacts.
Sure.
That, that go along with that, uh, meeting. Does that bring in school kids?
Right.
Yeah.
Into the recycled, uh, recycled housing. The other meeting was a, was a, a legal, uh, primarily, uh, legal orientation, oriented meeting. And, uh, the, 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 probably the, the thing, the clearest message that got transmitted to Thorndike. Is that we didn't want to do their zoning as a floating zone. That that had been a problem in this town once before.
Right. So that's where it's not specifically noted where it exists, so that we.
So, so what, what, what happened with the, uh, hospital property originally?
D O D, the development opportunities district that was never tied to a certain area. When the resident groups appealed that, it went through two sets of appeal court judges. And they all said that this was a floating district, because it was never tied down to a specific area. So that's what, so this is gonna have to specifically outline the area of the Lakeville Country Club.
Right, right, that was, that was the, the, the main thing that came out of that, out of that meeting, is that, uh. In their drafting, uh, a, a proposed zoning change for this land, that we did not want it as a, as a floating zone.
Right, and, and the map will have to be updated, and it's gonna have to be shown as an overlay on the map, in the zoning map.
Right, right. Right, so, yeah, so that, that's, the, those are the things that happened in those, in those two meetings. It was mostly getting those, getting those processes started.
Yeah.
And, and they're having an understanding of kind of what our ground rules, rules we're gonna, we're gonna start out as.
And what's the next meeting? Do you have another one?
Uh, we don't have another one exactly scheduled, they were, they were talking about trying to do the legal meeting like every two weeks. But kind of as needed, and, uh, it, we, we've, we've been two weeks out, and I think they, uh. They, they just weren't ready to do a, a, another one.
Okay.
And just yet.
Just for clarification, the legal meetings were representatives from Thorndike?
Uh, was, was, was Thorndike and, and, uh, uh, building commissioner, Kate Select Board, me. Who's our, our?
K P Law?
K, yeah. Amy Quessell?
A, a, yeah, Amy, Amy, Amy was in, was in that meeting.
Oh, okay, I was gonna ask. Good, very good, so everybody's on the same page, good.
Right, right, so, so all, all the, the important people were, were there. Everybody was represented.
Thank you, David.
Yes, thank you, any more questions on that? Um, the next item is committee liaison updates, I think you just covered that for Lakeville Country Club, anybody else have any?
I have a very quick update, uh, the Economic Development Committee met on this past Monday. Um, we discussed at length, um, the Economic Development Survey for both, uh, residential as well as for business. Um, we hashed out every single question. Uh, we have come to a, a finalization of the questions, which is great for both sections. Uh, next step is going to be the marketing plan, uh, and getting it out via, um, a survey-generated, um, service called serfs, uh. Survey Monkey, so that will be, uh, going out to residents in the very near future. And, um, you know, we're hoping to get some great feedback from both, uh, there'll be a lot of advertising for it. Postings and whatnot, so we can get, um, a lot of feedback from the residents and businesses.
All right, anybody else? All right, our next meeting will be December eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at the Lakeville Police Station, any other business? Hearing none.
What was the date?
Uh, December eleventh.
Okay, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Um.
Charlotte will be there.
Okay.
I'll be in, in the social hospital, supporting rehab.
Okay, Jack, good luck. Um. If you can watch the me- oh, David, so that is the continuation date for the special permit that we have. Kathy said you have to watch the first meeting, and you have to get with the town clerk to mullonize.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Which special permit?
So, one sixty Bedford, unfortunately Donna is not able to sit in for Jack for this, because she was, it was, it happened prior to her coming on. Jack, for the meeting, if you can watch it, and when you're able to, mullonize with, um, the town clerk.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sounds good.
Other than that, does anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, eight fifteen, eight, um.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned.
Just under the.
Roll the credits.